And you would think that, say, we did it from this address to this address. So I think that's true.
Thank you for the time, Bob.
Certainly looks like this.
The way the money is that don't change your life.
I hope they get it. They can't want my back.
You're getting that.
Yeah. Yeah. There. I hope if they get some refund, that would be a bad news.
That's what I'm going to do, too.
I told you. No notice. In the circle, they were checking. Board out like what it says in the document.
Oh, the caller. I would call like you.
It is 6:00 PM on this May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll call this town council meeting to order. Welcome all those in attendance, those who are tuned in online. We appreciate you being here and participating and paying attention. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Parrott.
Here.
Mr. Yolan.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Thank you. We'll go into the invocation, which I will lead. You're welcome to join if so inclined or to not if so inclined. And then we'll follow it up with Mr. Vice Mayor Reed, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us sustain our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, and we forgive their trespasses against us. Please, not intimidation, but deliver us from evil. And that is the kingdom, and our glory, and forever and ever. Amen. The Lord is the least, is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is sanctified, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Thank you. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next is the declaration of personal interest. Do we have anyone who wants to make a declaration of personal interest concerning anything on the agenda this evening? Not hearing any. I'm gonna call a quick audible and have the county administrator, Prince Edward County Administrator Doug Stanley, give his report before we open up public hearing. Welcome, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate Scott was able to come over last night and present a report on behalf of council. Appreciate council, for those of you who can make it, for our photo op last night, a great way that we're working together in our community to protect our citizens. A few things I wanted to hit on in my report. As you know, and y'all working on budget, our two thousand and twenty-five general reassessment is completed. Overall county assessments were up thirty-seven point three-nine percent. I believe a little bit lower maybe in town. The equalized rate for the county was thirty-seven cents, and the board ultimately set a real estate rate of thirty-nine cents per hundred. I would note, the two thousand and twenty-five estimated sales ratio is showing a median ratio of eighty-nine point nine-six when looking at the twenty-four sales. That's basically where we're down below. People think their assessments are up, but sales are showing that they're surpassing what the new assessments are. Using the previous values, we were at sixty-four percent. So we've, you know, closed that gap considerably, but the prices keep moving. We are posting a summary, a suggestion of our vice chair. We have developed an online meeting summary after each of our meetings. If you ever want to see what the county's doing, it's a quick way for y'all to go, click on that link and take a look at it. We are in the process of finishing up our updates to the county website, and that should be completed here within the next month. I know the town manager has included funding in there for possible joint dispatch. We are continuing to work on that on our end. I know Chief Ellington needs an answer on some grant funding for combining dispatches, and I promised to get an answer to him by the middle of June. Emergency radio system project, the town, county, and our consultant met virtually with Dominion regarding the use of their tower on Millwood and East Third Street. Looks like that will be, looks like we're back on for being able to utilize that space. And I want to thank Dr. Davis for his help in trying to help coordinate that with Dominion. We've got two additional tower sites out in the county that we think we've got lined up to, and that those three will represent the three needed for the project. Our elementary school project is remaining on schedule for a spring two thousand and twenty-seven completion. If you haven't, this, the photo in your, in your report here tonight was just a few weeks ago, but already all the steel's up. So if you go out there, you'll see quite a bit of activity on the site. Recycling, we were notified this past week that Steps would not be accepting any recycling material. Apparently both their balers are broken. Sharon Harrop had indicated they did not expect Steps to be in a position to accept recycling prior to the end of June. We have Elite Recycling at our Brookneal has stepped in to handle that, and we're in the middle of an RFP process to look at another way of handling our recycling, and we'll certainly keep, Scott, if you need any help in the meantime between the end of June, just let us know on that. Our Connects Plant Network Broadband Project continues to move forward. The goal is to get this project completed by the fall of two thousand and twenty-six. If you look at that map of the county, the areas in green are kind of active service areas that have been built, and the areas in brown are ones that are, be completed over the next year. A lot of that is, I'll say, the southern and eastern portions of the county. Was actually on site last week. They had a crew putting fiber in the ground in the rice area. Our Regional Economic Development Organization, we've had our, as in August, we had our, last year, we had our first meeting, our proposed organization, and we have since hired an executive director. Verita represents six of the seven counties, the CRC, not Amelia. We've adopted bylaws, hired an executive director, Alex McCoy. Alex is supposed to be reaching out to you, Scott. Position will be embedded within the Small Business Development Center here at the Seed Innovation Hub. Alex is making his way around the region, and will be setting up, again, meetings to talk about how Verita can support. So the counties, we're paying the freight as far as the operational costs, but they are an asset for the town to use as well to help us market the region. We look at him being able to be kind of a first contact with Virginia Economic Development Partnership and help feed prospect leads back to our community. So hopefully it'll give us additional presence in economic development. Our Economic Development Strategic Plan, a final draft, has been completed. A copy of the draft has been, a link's been sent over to Dr. Davis for distribution to the council. Development of the plan included a number of town business owners. Plan is being partly funded by an APID grant with a focus on supporting agriculture and value-added agricultural manufacturing in the region. We would welcome any input you guys have. There's a, I think, a forum where you can go in and make comments. The document will provide a roadmap moving forward for the county in promoting the community. Back to reassessment, our Board of Equalization has completed training. They've been sworn into office by Judge Blessing. They will hold their organizational meeting on May nineteenth. Any property owner who is dissatisfied with the outcome of their property reassessment will soon be able to file an appeal with the Board of Equalization. They're gonna have a set of meeting dates that's been advertised, and they'll have additional dates throughout the year. But again, if you're dissatisfied, you don't feel like the Board of Assessors adequately handled your appeal, this is the other avenue for you to take. Just a couple economic development project updates. The Five Pillars Meet Project has been completed. Wawa is open, the Flagstop Car Wash is open, and Harbor Freight, there'll be a, I believe, a ribbon cutting nine AM next Tuesday. I know some invitations went out from Chelsea White. We certainly would love to have any or all of you, if your schedule permits. And lastly, county comprehensive plan, I know you are going to be talking comp plan update again. We're just wrapping up ours. We completed the final draft. We'll have a joint public hearing, Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors on June twenty-fourth at seven PM. And as always, you're welcome for any comments you have on that process. And again, we utilized the services of the Berkeley Group, in part because they had helped y'all draft your last comp plan and tried to make sure that the two plans were complementary to each other. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Stanley this time?
Thank you, Dr., Mr. Stanley, for the report. Last year, you had a really successful toxic pickup for the oils.
Household hazardous waste.
Thank you. Household hazardous, toxic pickup.
We are looking to do that again this fall, and probably by next time I come to you, we'll be, I'll make sure when we set a date, I'll share that information with town staff so that they can get that out. But we had a lot of folks, everything from, you know, paints and thinners and oil and different things left around the house and the garage, and it was a good way for us to get it out of the waste stream and out of our landfill.
Any additional questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Next is the public hearing section. So we have two public hearings. The first is Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-five oh five oh one for the FY two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six town budget. Do we have anyone signed up to speak, Ms. McKay?
Carol Broadwater.
I think she took it up, but we'll make sure we get you up here.
Ms. Broadwater, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Vincent, and members of town council. My name is Carol Broadwater.
Ms. Broadwater, you mind speaking into the microphone so everybody at home can hear you as well? Thank you.
My name is Carol Broadwater. I reside in Ms. Amos' district, and I have been a resident of Farmville for seven years. I've been a downtown business owner for twenty-seven years. I come to you tonight on behalf of Prince Edward Rescue Squad. I have been with the agency for fifteen years as an EMT and served on the board as president, vice president, treasurer for thirteen of these fifteen years. For fifty-six years, since nineteen sixty-nine, Prince Edward Rescue has stood as a cornerstone of community service and medical care for the heart of Virginia, a commitment deeply rooted in serving the citizens of Farmville just as much as those who live beyond town limits. Before proceeding, I want to acknowledge that these remarks come at a point in the budget process that may seem late. However, please understand the leadership of the Prince Edward Rescue Squad has dedicated considerable time and substantial deliberation to thoroughly assess the implication of the town's proposed budget and to formulate a response that reflects the change in the support for our agency. In the year two thousand and twenty-four, Prince Edward Rescue answered three thousand five hundred and sixty-three calls for service. Of these, a staggering seventeen hundred and ninety-nine calls, representing fifty-point four percent were within the boundaries of the town of Farmville. While we serve the broader county, these numbers definitively illustrate that over half of our responses are within the town. These figures underscore the undeniable reality of our agency's profound and frequent engagement in safeguarding the health and well-being of our community. Our commitment to the residents of the town of Farmville have been dedicated and unwavering, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, holidays. Our call, our call volume has increased substantially over the past ten years, demanding an increase in staffing. We staff two trucks, four employees, and one operations chief daily. We have a paramedic scheduled on all four twenty-four hour shifts, and volunteers who respond at all hours to cover calls for service. We are grateful for the past support from the town of Farmville through fuel cost, vehicle maintenance, groundskeeping, winter weather preparation, and I'm sure others. With the reduction of the town's prior commitment of fifty thousand for vehicle maintenance that has been reduced without any communication to our agency, it is concerning that now a five thousand dollar reduction in a crucial fuel line item, and it makes it difficult for our agency to budget appropriately. We believe it is imperative that both the public and you, town council, recognize that as Farmville has grown, the role of Prince Edward Rescue fulfills, and emergency medical response of Farmville has also grown. Therefore, we issue a direct and earnest request to the residents of Farmville. We are not on the brink of closure. The support we require to sustain, to sustain and further develop our mission and execute a standard level of service is not currently reflected in the town's proposed budget.
Ms. Broadwater, your time's up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Gary Barton.
Mayor, town council.
Mr. Barton, if you wouldn't mind, speaking into the microphones so the folks at home can hear you as well.
Mayor, town council, and everyone in attendance. I just have a few questions. One thing that I wonder about the budget, town budget, I mean, I do live in the town, lived in the town for some time, and I see a lot of changes, some maybe for the good, some maybe not so much for the good. But I just, and also live in the county, so I pay taxes because I live in both, and I think there needs to be a balance here. If the town wants to raise taxes, if the county wants to raise taxes, and these are pretty tough times for a lot of people. We have inflation. We have a lot of debt that's been incurred by the last federal administration, which comes down to us in a way of supporting it. I think we're what, thirty-six, thirty-seven trillion dollars in debt, which someone has to pay. So we have a lot of inflation because of that, among just overspending. And my question, the main question is, who determines what the town really needs, what it will owe to keep up the streets, services provided, and, which I say, these are vital items. We need streets, we need a lot of things to some extent. But what concerns me a lot when I hear the budget is who determines the wants or the, some desirable items by some, probably not the majority of the people in the town. We usually, and we have been used to paying for whatever we receive. If we want to go to a recreational facility, belong to a fitness club, swim in the swimming pool, have a swimming pool, we will pay for these things for ourselves. And of course, we will pay for them afterwards because there will be an assessment, and we will pay the tax continuously after we've installed them, if we're able to install them. And the same goes for paying for our houses, paying off our mortgages. I really feel that once we pay our house off, we paid taxes for thirty years, twenty-five years, we paid for the house, I don't know really why we should keep paying tax on, or that all the taxes should rest on pretty much our real estate.
Mr. Barton, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I would like to ask the question, who determines what is, what are the needs for the citizens of this town, and then what are the needs for other people that aren't even citizens of this town? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Ms. McKay?
No one else has signed up?
All right. We will close the public hearing for Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-five oh five oh one, FY two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six town budget. Move to the next public hearing, which is Resolution two thousand and twenty-five oh five oh two, the Capitol Improvement Plan. Do we have anyone signed up to speak about the CIP?
No, sir.
All right. We will close the CIP public hearing and move to the public comment period, public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for the public comment period, Ms. McKay?
No, sir.
All right. We'll close public comment period. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. You have the draft minutes of the April second work session, April ninth council meeting, and the April twenty-third special meeting in your packet. If there are no changes, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next up on the agenda is the finance report. Finance Director, Ms. Julie Moore, with the April two thousand and twenty-five finance report.
Good evening. You have the April finance report in front of you. For the ABM project, we earned three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the month of April. Again, this is going to go towards our debt payment. In March, I mean, April, we earned fourteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars with VIP, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars with the sweep accounts at Benchmark, and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars with LGIP. So for the total, we earned fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars for April, excluding the ABM income. You also received the retail sales report in your package this time. The retail sales have declined for the second year in a row, which is something we need to monitor closely. While grocery stores and restaurants saw slight increases likely due to inflation, other retail spending is down, suggesting that consumers may be cutting back. Overall, business activities continue to grow, but at a slower pace than the previous years, which could impact future revenues. This suggests that we may be nearing a leveling off with few newer businesses or slower growth in taxable activity. The two thousand and twenty-four retail sales report highlights the importance of watching sector-specific trends moving forward. Do you have any questions?
I'm going to reference this because it was referenced in public hearing, but the rescue squad numbers are in here as well for the finance report, correct?
Correct.
And it shows that year-to-date, we have contributed to the tune of, I think, forty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars between labor, materials, equipment, and fuel for the rescue squad. And what's the reference to cutting back, Mr. Davis? Or Ms. Moore, I'm sorry.
Trying to make the budget balance, and I was looking, we always looked to see how much is being spent, and so those, like they were going to use up all their money that we had budgeted for this past year, so we were cutting any, in all areas we could to make the budget balance.
I'll give you an example. Going back to FY twenty, materi, so we show labor, the cost that we do to do labor, which we don't bill them for labor. Materials, we allocate a set amount of money for the materials, that is, whether it's oil, transmission fluid, a new transmission, those types of things. The equipment is a price on the maintenance around the building, what that maintenance is, what that equipment cost is. And then, of course, fuel is the cost of what that fuel would be. So let me take you back to FY twenty. That's the first year, the town, Longwood, Hampton City agreed to do three years of an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars. So you have that in twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. On top of that, that's when we started doing other than fuel. We were doing fuel before twenty, the town was, and that was it, just fuel and the maintenance of their property. So before twenty, that's all we did. In twenty, there was some financial concerns that came to light. So we had a person from council, a person from the Board of Supervisors, a person from Hampton City, and Longwood. I don't know exactly how they were in or on the board or not on the board for the rescue We said that we would fund them for three years to get them to a point where they could hire an executive director and be able to be sustainable. We did that. So to go over the materials, when we, what was, she's talking about is, we look at each year. So if we, let's say we budget thirty thousand for materials. Well, if we're not spending that, it's kind of like our own budget internally for departments. If you're not spending that, then we reduce it instead of it just sitting there, and we can allocate it to other things that are needed. So for materials, in FY twenty, the total spent was seventeen thousand two twenty-six. They were appropriated a lot more than that, wasn't used. In FY twenty-one, twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars was spent. We appropriated more than that. In twenty-two, we appropriated more, but they only spent fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars in materials. In FY twenty-three, we actually gave them another appropriation of fifteen. We did half, even though what we committed to was over. We did do that. That year, in materials, we appropriated more, but they spent twenty-two, three ninety, and that's because in that year, we couldn't do the work, so we had to take it to East End for what needed to be done, and that was a nine thousand, almost a ninety-five-hundred-dollar In twenty-four, no appropriation. They only spent thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty in materials. In the current year, which hasn't ended, they're currently, as of this report, spent twenty-one, nine eighteen. The reason for that cost, once again, another major issue happened, and that was the replacement of a transmission for sixty-seven hundred dollars. So the only time those numbers jump is if it is a major, it seems, if there's a major issue with a, with an apparatus. If, you know, let's say we budget twenty-five thousand dollars. If they were to go over and it was reasonable and we had the funds to move, we would do that and come to you and say, been some issue, we need to allocate an additional amount to cover that expense. But nothing has been over twenty-five thousand dollars to this date. So we look at what has caused, what the cost had been when we do the budget.
Thank you. Any additional questions concerning the finance report at this time? Not hearing any. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We don't have any old business. We don't have any new business, and so we can roll to the town manager's report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We need the finance report.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We do need to approve the finance report as presented. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. McKay. Town manager's report, Mr.?
Mayor, before I go into that, just one other thing I'll add about the rescue squad is, just keep in mind that the residents of Farmville, Prince Edward County residents as well, and every citizen that owns a vehicle, is levied an additional fee for EMS, and the county appropriates funds from that tax that every citizen of the county pays for that. So those are town people as well, from that appropriation that the county does. My report, the, we've My report, the, we've awarded paving to county construction, it'll be right about a million dollars worth of paving this year. They should be starting the first part of June. Most of the streets will be on the east, on the north side of East Third Street for the majority, however, we will cross over and do South Bridge Street and South Virginia Street because they're on both sides. The splash pad will open on Saturday, the 24th, for Memorial Day weekend, and will stay open, hopefully with no issues, no pumps, none of that this year, until after, right after Labor Day weekend, and then it'll close. We actually have the drawings finally for the restroom that will be going out in that area, so Ms. Moore and Kim Thompson will be putting that bid out either next week or there, soon thereafter, to get that bid out and awarded so that we can have construction for that to be built. We are in the midst of updating our website, so pretty soon you'll see new colors and all those things, and so, I don't know if you've seen, we do have a bot that you can talk to and ask, and it'll find your stuff these days. So we've added that. We did hire, I sent you all information, we did hire a new Public Works Director. His name is Stephen Edwards, he'll be coming to us officially on paper, it's June the 1st, but that's a Sunday, but he'll be at work on Monday, June the 2nd. He has over 20 years of experience in public works, erosion, sediment control, stormwater, all of those areas, and so we'll be happy to welcome him to our staff. We actually had a construction meeting with the general contractor and for the Chipotle, so they will begin demolition of the current structure on the site and then grading here in the near future, hopefully in the next several weeks. We will be having a V, a meeting with VDOT and their consultants, Michael Baker, hopefully next week, it's not formally scheduled yet, but tentatively for next week, to talk about betterments, which is enhancements to our, that the town would be responsible for, for the water sewer and any manholes that need to be. So VDOT in the, in the roundabout project will, if it interferes with the project, they will move items so that they won't be in the middle of the roundabout that's gonna be concreted and those types of things, but they won't do any improvements, the betterments is what they call it. So what we're, if they have to relocate a manhole, of course, they cover the cost of relocating the manhole, but any betterment to that, if the pipe needs to be, other than moving the pipe, they're not gonna replace it any distance. So that would be on us, and that's what we've been talking about, we're putting away the $2.5 million to go towards those things in Oak Street. So we'll be meeting on that, what that looks like, and what our plan is the town wants to see for our portion done in that project. This week is National Police Week, and May the 15th is Police Memorial Day, well, Peace Officer Memorial Days, I'll say Police Officer Memorial Day. And then I give a congratulations to a staff member who wanted to better themselves and had been in the private sector for quite some time and knew that world, and went and got a master's in public administration from Liberty University, and it is very exciting that it was our very own Julie Moore, so she just graduated last week, and I'd like to congratulate her and thank her for her continued goal of development. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Congrats, Ms. Julie Moore, that's awesome. Mr. Hardy?
Congrats, Julie, that's awesome.
Mr. Hunter?
Congrats. Also, just a reminder of, I was asked to remind you all, whoever did not respond to the open house at Holly Manor Rehab on May the 21st, 4:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
Mr. Yellen? Mr. Parrott?
I'm good.
Mr. Dwyer?
How do I think, Mayor?
Mr. Reed?
Congratulations, Ms. Julie.
Ms. Amos?
Congratulations, Julie. I want to thank Carol Broadwater, the treasurer for Prince Edward Rescue Squad for being here, as well as Bridgette Davis, the president of the Rescue Squad for being here. Thank you, appreciate you, appreciate all you do, and thank you for voicing your opinion, and thank you for your voice.
All right, I'll close up quickly. This past month, had the opportunity to attend an NLC meeting on data centers, which I found to be very insightful. Also attended the Empty Bowls Event, which is a fundraiser for faces, very cool event. And then the Citizen Police Academy graduation was here recently. Congrats to our police, police officers who put that great academy on, and all the citizens who volunteered to learn about the amazing police force that we have here in Farmville. And also, recognize, Mr. Davis was there last night, but the area, Prince Edward and Farmville, recognized for the Storm Ready Community Award yesterday, which is a very cool collaboration between many of the entities here in town. We do have the Small Towns Conference coming up in June here in Farmville. It'll be based out of the Wyonoke and Longwood. We appreciate Longwood's assistance there and our local Wyonoke Hotel for housing 150 or so locally elected officials from across the Commonwealth. It'll be a good opportunity for the town to put out its best and welcome a bunch of folks who are really dedicated placemakers from, from other towns across Virginia. In that vein, I was recently asked to become the Vice Chair of the Virginia Municipal League Legislative Committee, which is a policy committee designed around advocating and creating policy to advocate at the state and federal level. And so if you have any of those policy issues that you wish me to bring to that table, please reach out at any time. With that, I think I'll say I'm open for a motion to adjourn, if anybody else doesn't have anything to say. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.